The clock on the wall is wrong. It's actually 6:03, so we're going to get started. Quickly tell you what we do and then we're going to do it. The Board is an all-volunteer Board. We are appointed by your county commissioners. Each commissioner appoints two members to the Board. We hear variances, we hear conditional uses, we hear special exceptions, and we hear rezonings. The variances and the special exceptions are recommendations. I mean, those are approved or denied by this Board, then they can be appealed to the commission. Rezonings and conditional uses are recommendations, and the Board takes final action. And we'll explain that again as we go. Tonight, I'm going to try something new, because last week, or last month, we were here for eight hours. That's not going to happen again. I am going to limit discussion on any particular item to 30 minutes. If the Board can't make up their mind in 30 minutes, there's something wrong with us. So I will let the applicant has 15 minutes. They don't have to use it all. They can reserve some of their time for rebuttal on the end. Those in opposition, I don't care if there's one of you or 500. 15 minutes is going to be the limit, and then if the Board needs more information, we'll bring you up for questions. So keep that in mind. Something new I want to try, because I nearly had a revolt last time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And my wife was not happy. So, to get started, we're going to start with a prayer, then we're going to start with the pledge, then we'll get going. Ask Mr. Calkins to lead us in prayer.
Lord, we'd like to give thanks for living in the greatest country on earth and the greatest county in the country. Please be with this Board. Help them to make good decisions. Please be with the audience and help them to be happy with our decisions, whether they disagree or agree. Help us to all get along and follow your will. And please be with our commissioners and help them make the right decisions. And please be with our military and keep them safe. And please be with our President. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now I'm going to ask the folks sitting up here to introduce themselves, let you know who we are, why we're here, and how we got here. And I'll start on my left.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Reader, District 1. I was appointed by Sam Parker.
Don Richards, District 5, appointed by Commissioner Lane Linder.
Good evening. My name is Charles Lloyd. I was appointed by Commissioner Sam Parker, District 1.
Good evening. My name is Scott Kemp, and I was appointed by Commissioner Bob Cole, District 2.
Good evening. My name is Bill Silman, and I was appointed by Commissioner Salter.
Good evening. My name is James Calkins, and I was appointed by Commissioner Bob Cole, District 2.
Good evening. My name is Van Hibberts, and I was appointed by Commissioner David Peach, District 4.
Good evening. My name's Danny Collins. I'm the staff advisor to the zoning board.
And I'm Sean Ward, planning and zoning director for Santa Rosa County.
And I'm Lonnie Hawkins. I have the pleasure of serving as your Chair. I was appointed by Commissioner Lane Linder. First item on the agenda is review of the minutes from February 14th, and then also review of the minutes from March 14th. Do I hear any corrections or additions to either set of minutes? Hearing none, they will be approved as presented. Now we'll slide, well, before we get into the old business, let me tell you, in case you are here for -- my paperwork is out of order. If you're here for item number seven, which is 2019 V-32 Seabreeze Baptist Church, that has been withdrawn, and I don't want you to sit here until we get to it to find out you can go home now. Now we'll get into old business. This was tabled from the March 14th meeting, 2019 conditional use 006 and 2019 variance 200.
This is Case 2019 CU 006. Brenda and Larry Gilman, represented by Baker Donaldson, are requesting a conditional use to allow towers and communication facilities in an AgRR zoning district. The applicant is also seeking a variance to increase the height of a guided communication tower from 180 feet to a 280 feet. This is for a proposed AT&amp;T tower. The location of the subject site is 3132 Salter Road in J. The subject site is in an AgRR rural residential agriculture zoning district. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is a close-up aerial of the subject site. The future land use is AgRR. The existing land use is agriculture. The subject site borders the rural protection zone, just to the south of it. This is looking at the subject site. This is looking west. The subject site is on our left. This is looking north. The subject site is behind us. This is looking east. The subject site is on our right. And that's all I have.
Do we have the applicant? Name and address for the record. Also, if you speak, we have a speaker's form we need you to fill out, so that we can get everything correctly into. And there's a button on the podium that says "Speak." We'll turn the red light on, and it's all yours.
Good evening. My name's Andy Rotenstrike. I'm from Baker Donaldson. I'm here on behalf of Brenda and Larry Gilman. Danny, thank you for that introduction, and I'm glad we did not come last month, it sounds like, and I was continuing to this month. So I am here on behalf of AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is proposing to fill a gap in service up there, and I can show you some maps that we have a clear coverage issue up there. So what we're proposing to do is put one tower there. We'll build it strong enough to accommodate other carriers, so when Verizon, T-Mobile, Sprint, others want to come and get better service in that area, they can just hang their equipment on this tower. We meet all the conditions of a conditional use. Really, the only issue is the extra 100 feet. You allow 180. We need 280, and the reason we need that is because, basically, the signal. The signal is kind of, is what it is. The FCC gives us a frequency that we can operate on, and that signal dictates where we need to be and how high. The elevation of the ground being so low, we just need it up higher. Being taller will also give more room and space for additional carriers, so that they'll need fewer poles and towers in the area as well. So we're here for both a conditional use and for the variance for 100 feet more than what the ordinance allows. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer.
Any questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, NAS Whiting Field Representative Randy Roy has reviewed this and approved it as okay, as well as the FAA.
Thank you, Sean. Yes.
Is there anyone here in opposition that would like to speak on this topic, that likes to have a weak cell signal? I didn't think so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve without objection.
Second. Hearing none, it is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And that's for both one and two?
That's both one and two.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Danny, thank you.
Now I'm going to take a point of personal privilege as a chairman, and I am going to move item number 11 to the front of the agenda. This is item 2019 V-038. Mr. Collins.
All right. This is Case 2019 V-038. Pamela Holmes is requesting two variances. The first one is to reduce the front setback from 25 feet to nine and a half feet. And the second variance is to reduce the rear setback from 25 feet to one and a half feet. This is to accommodate a single-family residence. The location of the subject site is 5377 St. John Street in Milton. The subject site is in an R1 single-family residential zoning district. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is a close-up aerial of the subject site. Existing land use is vacant. There is a potential for wetlands on the property. This is a survey of the property. This is looking at the subject site. Site's currently cleared. This is looking east. The subject site is behind us. This is looking north. The subject site is on our left. This is looking south. The subject site is on our right. That's all I have.
Ms. Holmes, or representative?
Good evening. I'm Pamela Holmes, and I just want to say that this piece of property was given to me, to my grandfather. I will be a first-time homeowner. Previously took care of my grandparents, and now that they are deceased, I'm able to go out and get my own home. I would just like to see if you could consider cutting the setback, so that I can put a family home here, so that I can have a home of my own. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I didn't quite understand when, Danny, when you were showing the pictures earlier, you said there's potential wetlands. What does that mean exactly?
That map is based on the National Wetlands Inventory Map, so there is a potential for wetlands on the site, but without a wetland survey, we don't know.
Is that not required?
No, sir. Generally, what you see there is just a resource tool, and there's 100 of different wetlands resource tools available and out there for use. That is something that we use, is the National Wetlands Inventory Map. It shows that there may be a potential for it, but, you know, based on looking at where that property is at, and it's already been cleared, the, there could potentially be wetlands adjacent to it, but not on that site there in particular.
Anyone in the audience care to speak, in favor or in opposition? Hearing none, pleasure of the Board, or any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, just so we have it on record, I don't think we got her address when she spoke.
The address of the property or where I live now?
Your address.
My address now is 8135 Jamie Drive, Milton.
Thank you.
83.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we approve without objection.
Have a motion for approval without objection?
Second.
Hearing none, it's approved. Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll jump back to item number two.
This is Case 2019 SX 004. Its property is owned by Jay Hill, and he's represented by Doug Walburn. Doug Walburn is requesting a special exception to allow temporary use of an RV as a guest residence due to a medical hardship. This is an open code compliance case, and there is a letter from the applicant's doctor included in the backup documentation. Location of the subject site is 6430 East Bay Boulevard in Gulf Breeze. The subject site is an R1 single-family residential zoning district. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is a close-up aerial of the subject site. The existing land use is single-family residential. This is looking at the entrance to the property from East Bay Boulevard. Looking at the front of the residence. This is standing along the east side of the property, looking in the rear of the yard. You can see the top of the RV as it sits at the rear of the residence. This is looking north towards the Santa Rosa Sound. The subject site would be behind us. This is looking at some of the structures in the front yard. And that's all I have.
Do we have the applicant or a representative? Name and address for the record, please, sir. Doug Walburn. You pull that microphone down closer to you. There you go.
Doug Walburn, 6430 East Bay Boulevard. We just basically needed a place for my mother-in-law. She's had 19 back surgeries. She just had a stroke here about two and a half months ago. So we're the only family that can take care of her with somebody around all the time. The rest of the family is out of town, so we're using it basically for a place for her to have her alone time. She showers, she eats, everything in the house. She's just got her own little private space. That's all we're using it for. It's not hooked up to septic or anything like that.
Have any?
Pardon me?
Any timeline? Doctors given you any suggestion of how long, or?
Right now, we're looking into other options for her to go somewhere else, as far as an assisted living. That's why she moved down here. She was in an assisted living in Tennessee. She had an issue. She passed out. It was two days before anybody found her, so that's why we brought her down here. My wife retired from the military, so there's somebody around all the time.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Calkins?
Yeah, I would like to know how this case came forward. I was under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you could currently have a RV as long as there's an existing structure. And I would like to ask Mr. Ward, is this due to the fact that somebody's living there? And did this, is, did, and how did this come about?
Yes, sir. This actually was a code compliance case for the report of somebody living in an RV. The Land Development Code actually does allow for the temporary use of a mobile home as a guest residence within any residential zoning district, through the special exception. In discussion with the county attorney, he felt that a mobile home versus an RV, simply an RV would be easier to remove after a period of time compared to having a mobile home actually come onto a property. But that criteria's in front of you there, so that's why he has the special exception for the RV request.
Okay. Was this a complaint by a neighbor, or was it by the, our local county?
No, sir. It was by neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, another one for Mr. Ward. Knowing that we're re, God, I apologize. Knowing that we are redrawing our Land Development Code, since, you know, it specifically states mobile home on here, I was wondering if we wouldn't consider, as we rewrite the document, to, you know, mobile home, RV, you know, put a comma in there, so, you know, in the future. It was just something that I thought about when I was reading through this today.
Yes, sir. So noted.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Nobody else? Did you ask for?
I haven't asked for the audience yet. So do we have anyone from the audience care to speak, in favor or against this item? Yes, ma'am. Come on. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Don Markey. I live next door at 6434 East Bay Boulevard, and I've been owning the property out there for 30 years.
And I'm Shirley Markey, same address. I believe you all have a package that Danny should have given you with pictures and our complaints. I think we're very concerned about an RV in the backyard of a house next to us because of the hurricane, potential safety, all that.
Yeah. I have multiple problems with our neighbor, who is not the owner of the property. I believe he's a tenant there. I'm not sure what the situation is. The owner lives in Atlanta, I believe. We got this paperwork. I went through it. It looks like some of the requirements to have this mobile home or RV or whatever, setback requirements, other requirements, have not been made. The lady that's living in there has been in there for 10 months already in violation of those requirements. And in addition to that, it's not just the RV that's on the property. He's running businesses out of that property. It's his own single-family residential. The businesses he is operating is a charter boat business and a upholstery-apparements business for boats. He's had as many as 11 boats in the yard or out back by the dock. 11 boats in the yard. That's not including trailers, a shed that he put up out there, a tent that he put up out there, two 50-gallon oil drums that are out there, a couple of Wave Runner jet ski-type vehicles, some kayaks, a paddleboat. The yard is full of, looks like a boat junkyard. Had he been a good neighbor, I might only be slightly opposed. He had a light out on his boat dock shining up to the back of our light, the back of our house, a bright, bright, bright light. Asked him to do something about it. He did nothing. My wife asked him to do something. He did nothing. I went to a third time and asked him to do something, and I told him that would be the last time I was going to ask him. He did nothing. We reported him to code compliance, who came out and made him do something about the bright light shining in the back of our house. If he had been a good neighbor, I would only probably be slightly opposed to this. He's not a good neighbor. He doesn't even own the property. And he's in violation of the requirements, as I understand them, to have that RV there now with somebody living in it for the last 10 months. I don't think he should be rewarded for breaking the rules. That's pretty much all I got to say. We have several neighbors here that are also against it. I don't know if any of them want to speak, but they're here to oppose it.
Okay. If you don't want to speak, but you're in the opposition, raise your hand. Let us, let us see you're here.
Opposition?
I'm not going to speak.
Okay. Not to speak. If you're just against.
I just want to say who's out there. Okay. Thank you.
I also believe other neighbors have written in, so we should have that.
Do you have any questions for us?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you're all good folks, no doubt. I mean, I'm sure he is, too. You say you lived there 30 years. I lived down there, off Woodlawn Beach. I know exactly where you're at. How long has the tenant been in this residence?
I'm guessing around two years, maybe a little longer.
Okay. All right. And this, and like you say, the, you know, repairing boats and all that stuff's been going on for?
Oh, that's been going on probably for the last year or so.
Okay.
And there's just boats all over the yard.
Now, I will say, and I know Mr. Ward will tell you, you know, the code compliance folks will also, you know, running, you know, business out of areas. You know, that's out of our purview. We can't do anything about that.
Code compliance guy told me, we complained about the charter boat business. And he says, well, he's in compliance, he's allowed to do that. And I said, okay. But he's not allowed to have customers drive up to his house. If he has customers, they have to park somewhere else. He has to go get them. That has not been the case.
And I understand my next-door neighbor works as a jet ski mechanic. Yes. He cannot, you know, work on jet skis in his yard, even though he's got a big, nice building. He has to have a facility down at OB. So I know exactly what you're talking about. And thank you, I don't want to thank you for coming out.
I just want to say that if you look at the pictures in my packet, would you want to buy our house with that?
What value's going down?
You know, it's just a value thing. I have nothing personal against his mother-in-law, but, you know, we're just tired of it.
All right.
Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for staff. Basically, this is a, does the applicant currently does not own the property?
No, sir, but he does have the permission of the property owner.
So the owner did give his permission?
Yes, sir.
For this?
That's correct. And just for clarification, regarding home occupation, you are allowed to have at least four customers a day for a home occupation. Code compliance did go out on Monday and found that there was no violations or anything to be held as current, so. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, one more question for Sean. As the gentleman was correct, that, and this was something I was going to talk to you about earlier, and I forgot, was in your package, there were two items on there that did state that they were not in compliant, that it did not have a site plan provided. So was that, I'm just confirming that is correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think there was also some discussion about, as far as the medical hardship regarding the time of allowance. And the Land Development Code says that it's initially granted for a period of up to two years on, for the medical hardship, and then they can come back to the Board and be granted for an additional two years, and then at that point, they either have to remove the mobile home or the RV if the extension is not granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Question for staff. If we were to approve, could we give a shorter time period than that, just to give them time to figure out other arrangements? Or does it have to be, I guess, can we stipulate a specific time period?
Yes, sir. You can certainly.
Yeah.
Yes. Come on.
Mr. Chairman, after what Mr. Reader said, I'd be okay with a year, just for the Board.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Elmhurst, sixty-four, sixty-four Twelve East Bay Boulevard. And I received a letter. And I called my friend and said, I personally cannot see it from my property. I am four lots down. But when he moved there and built on to the pier and put up the bright light, it lit up my yard. So I was finally happy when he did something with that. When, um, let me see, I wasn't planning on speaking. So when I walked down there, since I was down there last, they had added a shed. They have a framework with white plastic over it, I, like a temporary garage-type thing or something. And, um, and they have put a boat on the property line facing my friend's thing. When they complained about the light, he put the boat there with the, the, um, thing he had written on the side, you had a picture of it derogatory to them right in front of their family room window. Thank goodness I don't live there, because I would be very upset. His yard is like a trash dump. I understand the trailer has been there for months. When we were going to build our house, we asked about putting a trailer on our property. They said we had to have a permanent cement slab. We had to have hookups to sewage and whatever else. And we decided not to do it. So I'm wondering whether he has done that. If a hurricane comes, what happens to all these things? When I was here during Ivan, our next-door neighbor, everything from theirs ended up in our driveway on the opposite side of our house from theirs. So I can understand having to have tie-downs and all that. That's all I have to say. I, I just feel sorry for his neighbors.
Thank you. Welber. Come back up. Let's ask a couple of questions.
Yes.
You said earlier it's not hooked up to water or sewer?
It's not hooked up to the water and sewer. We, we originally got it so if there was a hurricane, we had something that we could take and live in while.
Yeah, hurricanes come and you're going to hook it behind the car and?
Yeah, it's gone. It's, it's not staying.
Okay.
As far as the other complaints, the light, yes. I did have an issue with the light. I've taken care of it. I've put a shield in it around the, the bulb. You know, I, I have my charter boat sitting there. I take my friends out there if I do charter. Typically, what I do is I pick them up. I was picking them up at the Bay Bridge, but since they tore out the boat ramp there, you can't pick up there. You have to go to Shoreline Park or somewhere. I haven't even been doing that for the last year, year and a half. It's just basically my boat. I use it the way I want it.
Yeah, and that's not even one of the items we're discussing. So what are you doing with? If she's living, sleeping in there, uh, I'm sure she's using restroom and stuff. So what are you doing with gray water and dark water?
It goes into a tank. I've got a tank with wheels on it and you.
Honey wagon, and you take it and dispose of it?
I dispose of it. It does not, it does not run on the ground. It, it doesn't go anywhere but where it belongs.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
They had made the comment earlier, there were some fifty-gallon drums out there with, uh.
I've got empty fifty-gallon drums in my front yard that I use for fuel when I use my boat. It, it's not that I, they're up front. They're up by the house where I keep them. And, and I just use that. It, it's easier than carrying a five-gallon bucket or a five-gallon can back and pouring gas in, into my boat.
I have a question for staff. That's a hundred gallons if he's got two fifty-gallon drums for fuel. So is that something that needs to be permitted through DEP?
Typically, I, typically, they're not full. Just fifty, fifty gallons or a hundred dollars worth is about all I put in them. And it goes right straight in the boat. It, the tanks are empty ninety-nine point nine percent of the time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Based on staffs, that would be certain, certainly considerable for DEP, but outside of our purview for tonight's discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I've got, I've got some issues. Looking at the criteria, you have to have adequate water and sewer. I know you're dumping your, dumping your black and gray water into a, in a portable tank and disposing of it. Where are we disposing it?
Into our septic system. We have a. Yeah, we have a, um, I guess they call it a, a clean-out. Then we take the cap off, and I've got the fittings that fit on to the end of the portable tank. And you stick it down in there, lock it in, and then you can dump it.
Okay. Don't have a site plan. We don't know how to.
I, I did.
Form some setbacks. My mother-in-law lived in our house for seven years. Her situation sounds very similar to your mother-in-law. Um, I'm, far be it for me to tell people how they need to live their lives, but I'm just wondering from a safety standpoint of, I know my mother-in-law, we could have not have put her out back in a, in an apartment or whatever behind us. She needed somebody there. Can't tell you how to run your life, but I'm just wondering if she might be better suited in your house rather than in this RV?
We really don't have the room in the house unless we completely remodel.
Right.
And that's an expense as well. And, and she really likes to have her own little space.
Right.
And, you know, at, at eighty years old, I'm not going to tell the woman that she has to live a certain way. Just try to make her comfortable.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just a, a couple of observations, I guess. Number one, I would hate to be the neighbor and have my neighbor yard look like this one looks. But it also appears as though it's a boat storage. I see in the pictures that there are three boats in the yard, two in the front yard and one in the back, apparently. You see coolers and other stuff laying around all over the place. And I just don't understand how another item in the yard is going to be conducive to what we try to live like on, on the south end. And, and that's a real concern of mine. We have somebody coming in here that's been in violation for ten months. And now we've got talk of another year of the same thing going on. I just don't see how I could support something like that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Obviously, it, it sounds like the neighborly relationship isn't there the way we'd like it to be, but it just, personally, I, I find it hard to tell a person within certain parameters what they can and can't do on side of the property. Now, this person's renting, so technically he doesn't own the property, but the owner does. And if the owner were sitting here, it'd be hard for me to say you can't have three boats in your yard. Now, obviously, running a business is different. I, I encourage everyone to be entrepreneurial, but there, there's a time and a place for a business. But we approve cases like this pretty regularly just without, without neighbors that are having other issues that are, that may or may not be outside of our purview. It's hard to tell sitting here whether there is a true necessity for it to be there or not. But like, like, like the other, other board member said, it's not really our, not up to us to tell them how to, how to use their property and live their life. If we hadn't approved so many of these in the past, I'd, I'd fill more long lines of saying that maybe there's another option. But notwithstanding the relationship with the neighbors, that being the only difference between the others that we've approved, it, it's hard for me to see where we can't approve this, at least with a time limit, to say that there needs to be something else done. I think the fact this is an RV versus a mobile home does make it different. Setbacks almost don't even matter. You know, if you told him a setback, he could go move it the next day and then move it again. I, I have something similar to this. They're very easy to move, especially if they're not hooked up to sewer or anything like that. The, the main issue is, just under the codes, having a person live there has to have a variance or an exception, which is, which is why he's here. And just, again, that's just my observation. We've approved many of these. The only difference being all the other stuff that, again, is not really in our purview that's happening, that need to be addressed. Obviously, running a business and, um, good neighbor or not, I, I don't think we can, we can force a person to be a good neighbor. I don't know if we, we'd even want to, to be in that business of forcing people into, into certain actions that are, that, that make them neighborly. But I don't know how we can deny this when we've approved others being so similar. But I'd like, I'd at least like to see a pretty short time period. I don't even know if I'd want a year. Because I want to see somebody kicked out of, out of what they're doing. And, and again, it's, it's not my property. I don't own it. But, um, again, just an observation there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think that, uh, and, and I appreciate what the other board members are having to say. The state of Florida makes arrangements for people that are not in a position financially to go to an assisted facility. My mother's ninety-eight years old, and they have for her. I understand what a good son-in-law is trying to provide for his mother-in-law. However, uh, that's not what our land development code stipulates. Having said that, listening to other neighbors, realizing what's taking place, I make a motion to deny.
There hasn't been a motion yet. I have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. In discussion, I have one question. Do we have a picture of the actual setup of the RV? We had a picture looking over the fence. But I don't think we have a picture of the actual setup.
No, um, uh, we don't have a picture of the actual setup of the RV. It's kind of fenced in, so it couldn't get, get inside the back.
Because my question is, reading Dr. Ray's letter, it is necessary to have permanent stamps and handrails to assist her in prevent falls and injuries. I wanted to see if the RV had permanent steps and handrails. That would help me in my decision-making. Are there permanent steps and handrails?
I made some temporary.
I made temporary wood steps to put up in front of it to make it easier for her to get in and out, but they're easily pulled away.
But are there, are there handrails on the side of the steps?
There is a handrail on it, just to make it easier for her.
Okay, that was, that's my only question.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm going to go back to building inspections and things. If the applicant can come back up, I've got a few more questions. This, uh, this RV, is it thirty or fifty amp?
Thirty.
And how is it wired into the house? Do you have a dedicated thirty-amp, thirty-amp box and a thirty-amp fuse? Or is it just plugged into the house on extension cord?
It's on a thirty-amp plug. There was already one there on the side of the house.
I'm sorry?
A thirty-amp plug.
Okay, is it on a separate circuit?
Yes, it is.
Ground faulted?
Uh, that I'm not sure. I haven't looked.
And how about potable water? Is it just a water hose hooked up to the side of the house?
Yes.
I've just, uh, I've, I've, I've got, got some issues. You need to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board? If not, please vote. A yes vote is a vote to deny. Motion to deny is approved by a vote of six and two. Silman Lloyd Richards, myself, Mr. Kent, Mr. Heberts, all voting yes. Uh, Mr. Cawkins, Mr. Reader, voting no. So the motion is denied. You do have the right to appeal it to the county commission. They'll make the final decision. And Danny can help you with the paperwork on filing that appeal. Next item.
In the meantime, before his appeal, if he can come into living in Woodlawn.
That would be?
Yes, sir. He has, he has basically two weeks for, to appeal it. And then after that point, code confor, code enforcement can go out and, and, uh, issue violations and citations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is case twenty nineteen SX zero zero five. David Radcliffe is requesting a special exception to allow the replacement of a non-conforming structure destroyed by an act of God. Location of the subject site is thirty, thirty-six Gulf Breeze Parkway in Gulf Breeze. The subject site is in an HCD Highway Commercial Development Zoning District. Subject site is in, or this is an area of the subject site, it's zoning properties. There's currently some warehouses on the property. This is a close-up area of the subject site. The future land use is commercial. This is a survey and kind of the site plan of the project. The proposed building is on the west side of the property. This is looking at the subject site from Highway ninety-eight. This is looking east. The subject site is on our left. This is looking south across ninety-eight. This is looking at the location of the proposed building. It was destroyed by a storm a few years ago. This is looking east at the location of the proposed, proposed building. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Radcliffe?
Good evening. I'm David Radcliffe of nine-five-seven Bestavia Way in Gulf Breeze. Thank you all, gentlemen. As Danny said and everything, in October of two thousand seventeen, when about the second cold front of the year came through, something blew through there, snatched the roof off of about a forty-year-old building, um, fifty-year-old building. And what I'd like to do now is ask for permission to go back and rebuild the building pretty much in the same site plan. I've had to make some adjustments for setbacks. But there's a few things on the property since it's already been developed way before any kind of other zoning ordinances there. Some exceptions for some land, um, holding ponds for, um, they gave me a list, list of things and everything, and I'd just like for permission to rebuild the building.
Questions from the board? Have a seat. Let's see if you, your neighbors want to talk about you. Do we have anyone in the audience?
I've got a quick question for you.
Care to speak in favor or in opposition?
Mr. Chairman?
David, I don't see anybody from the audience, so come back up and let's, let the board ask you some questions. And I'm glad you said it was a storm of two thousand seventeen. I had heard it was Ivan, and I was going to ask you what took so long?
Actually, waiting, waiting on another, uh, on a architect I thought I had working on it and everything, I waited on him too long. And then the second part, we're just understanding the process I had to go through to get the variance and everything. I kind of misunderstood that a little bit.
Mr. Radcliffe, let me, uh, if I might, Mr. Chairman. Are you going to build back on that same foundation you're showing right there in your, in your plan right there?
Yes, the same foundation. Before, previously, the foundation, the footprint was twenty-eight hundred square feet. Working with staff and everything, I have some setback issues on the back. So instead of it being seventy-foot wide, I'm going to bring it back to, uh, fifty-foot wide. It was forty-foot deep. I would like to go back fifty-foot deep. It's, it's virtually in the same footprint, but it's actually going to be about three hundred square feet smaller than what was there.
Okay. I guess the question I have for staff would be, if we don't go back with the same footprint that we have in there, if we're increasing that, even if we're building, is there any kind of requirements? Is there a certain square footage that we could say, we could, we could alter that? Then that, I, I think that's what he's doing, altering that plan or that, that floor plan to fit back on that foundation? You say you're going back ten feet further or fifty?
And, and that's so that on the west side of the building, it was within a, probably of the, the street out there, it probably was within about ten feet of the property line. They're asking me to go to twenty-five, so I'm making it about twenty-foot narrower. I'm going back, and that makes the very back corner of the building within, I mean, it's right out of the twenty-five-foot setback that they, they were asking for.
So we're basically decreasing the amount of impervious area?
De, decreasing.
Yeah. That's what you're doing.
I have a question for staff, um, and also for Mr. Radcliffe. Basically, your application deals primarily with setbacks. Is that correct?
Uh, now, the, the four or five issues that I was asked to, asked for was, um, holding ponds on the property. It's, it's already been developed and everything. The green belt along the back part of the property, that's where the roadway is for my, uh, from the warehouses and everything. If I had to put in that ten or fifteen-foot green belt, that's where the road goes to. Interconnectivity to the property next door. It, it's not built, it's not ready for it and everything, and the neighbor doesn't want it anyway. And he's obviously not here today fussing because he, he, he doesn't want the interconnectivity.
Now, the, the question I have, the new structure, will it conform to the Uniform Building Code for wind loadings?
Oh, yes.
Okay, no, it was, and that was going to be my question for staff. We weren't going to let them come back and build a subcode building.
Oh, no, no, no.
No problem.
Really, I learned and everything, and this, this one, I hope to, it will be far tougher than anything else we've built on the property.
I had a contractor tell me one time, oh, this will never blow away. And I pointed out to him that never can be a very long time.
Uh, I'm actually in the insurance business, and I know what blowing away, quite a few things means and everything. And I'm going to do everything I can to make this one survive.
Well, I had thirty-eight years of farm bureau, so we've. Well, I had 38 years of farm bureau, so we've walked on the same side of the road.
There you go. Motion to approve?
Second. Just a real quick clarification from staff, so basically, he was given a list of things that he would need to do to, to, to build, or he could get this, this approval just to build on the same footprint and alleviate those things, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any further discussion?
So with what we have right now, we don't have to abide by any other additional rules, I think, by the county?
No, sir, and we've, we've met with Mr. Radcliffe, and actually, if you look in your packet, there's about four pages of, of pre-application notes, so this is, this is consistent with what staff is, is, is looking for.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second already. I'm just waiting for any, any further discussion? And it's just 10 minutes to six, carding to the clock on the wall, so we're, we're way ahead of schedule. Please vote.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item.
James Waters is requesting a variance to reduce the shoreline protection zone setback from 50 feet to 45 feet from the mean high water line to accommodate unenclosed porch. The location of the subject site is 3911 West Madura Road in Golf Breeze. The subject site is in a PUD planned unit district. This is an area of the subject site and surrounding properties. This is a close-up area of the subject site. The existing land use is single-family residential. This is the proposed site plan that was provided with the application. There's currently an existing pool on the site that existed prior to the shoreline protection zone. This is looking at the location of the proposed unenclosed porch. This is looking west, the location of the unenclosed porch, it's on the Santa Rosa Sound. This is looking south. This is looking east at the location of the unenclosed porch, and then, and that's it.
Thank you, Danny. Mr. Waters. Name and address, please, sir.
Sorry, sir?
Name and address for the record.
James and Jennifer Waters, we're at 3911 West Madura, Golf Breeze, Florida.
Anything to add to the presentation?
I think Danny summed it up well. We are wanting to extend the roof line to give us some shade in the back of the house. It's an unenclosed porch.
Cement?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. Any, any other questions from the board while we have the applicant up?
Just to understand the project, it looks like from this, it makes sense to me, but it's not going over the pool, right? It's going to be kind of beside it?
It'll be to the west of the pool.
Okay.
Will it extend out as far as the pool?
Not quite as far as the pool. If you look at the drawings, there's two pillars that are in line with the trough of the pool, and so the architectural symmetry will give a straight line from the trough heading east to west.
Any other questions? Anyone here in the audience to speak in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Move to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Your request is approved, eight to nothing.
I just wanted to take a second to say thank you to you guys for volunteering your time. You are making the county a better county. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as a redhead with fair skin, thank you very much, because I want, I need my shade. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Dirk Lainhart is requesting a variance to allow an existing accessory structure, specifically a mobile shed approximately 192 square feet prior to the construction of a residence. The location of the subject site is on Soundside Drive in Golf Breeze. Subject site is an R1 single-family residential zoning district. This is a area of the subject site and surrounding properties. This is a close-up area of the subject site. The existing land use is vacant. This is the proposed site plan that was provided with the application. You can see where the mobile homes, or the mobile shed sits on the property. This is looking south at the property from Soundside Drive. This is looking at the existing shed on the property. This is looking at the property to the west of the subject site. This is looking north, the proposed shed's behind us. This is looking at the property to the east of the subject site, it's currently vegetated. And that's all I have.
An applicant or a representative? Is the applicant or a representative here? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, it appears that he's not using that shed for construction site or building, but rather just for storage without requesting any previous permits. Therefore, motion to deny.
Mr. Chairman, just out of curiosity, is anyone here in opposition?
Didn't see any letters in opposition, but someone called code enforcement.
Yeah, and actually, I know his neighbors, and they did leave a letter, and sent, they sent Danny a note here saying that they had no problem with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's from two of the neighbors that.
Doug Terrell.
Yeah.
Well, by issue, also, in that this is a code compliance issue, I think he at least should have shown us courtesy to be here and explain his position, and I support the motion to deny.
Is that a second?
Yeah. Was that, was that a second?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, for consideration, understanding, you know, not knowing what the facts might be, why the gentleman is not here, would the two distinguished members consider tabling this for 30 days, allowing the applicant to come back? And understanding that code compliance, that when you read through it all, it looked real bad until you found out that he did not get the original letter supposedly, and as soon as he did, he markedly took care of it, correct, Danny? I mean, that was the way I read it. So that was just, your indulgence, you.
Well, my concern is, the first contact with code enforcement was in December. February looks like is when he filed the application, so it took him two months from being told he was in violation to getting around to filing an application. The first line that said he co-owns the lot with an address in Navarre. I don't have a problem with tabling it for a month, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand my ground with the motion to deny simply because, two things. One, it doesn't meet the Land Development Code, which is the rules and regulation for which we are guided and supposed to be using. And two, it's pretty much understood that you can submit a variance to this board, and it's going to be approved, and he doesn't even show the respect to the county to even come and, to do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We don't know his situation, in my opinion. I, I would agree with Scott to, to table it, but it's up to the, to Mr. Hibberts that made the motion, so, but I will vote no on the motion. Thank you.
Yes, sir, come on up. I didn't, but.
Jeremiah Kaler, I'm actually here for my own variance, but coincidentally, I believe this is my friend's land, and I work with him, and I think he's on vacation. So I don't know if he got the letter late, had the vacation planned, and he actually couldn't be here. I just wanted to say that, that maybe that's why he's not here. And I think, he told me the story about that land. He, he bought it initially for his boat, and he was, had like a catamaran, he was leaving there, and then he found out he couldn't do that, and I think that shed was where he was probably keeping some supplies there. He had to remove his boat, and then maybe that's what he started this variance for. So I just wanted to add that because I saw him last week, and I know he's on vacation.
Okay, thank you.
Danny, do we know if it's still there? I mean, he might have, realizing he doesn't need it, he might have taken it off of there. Is there?
I, I was at the, the property two weeks ago, and the shed was still there. The boat that's referenced in the code compliance notes was not on the property. Just for point of, I guess, conversation, again, there's, there's a reason why we have this variance process, and then, obviously, you, you think that a person would be here to, to speak on it because we do have questions. These things are pretty regularly approved if they meet certain criteria, and we don't know if there's criteria, we don't know if there's going to be building on here or anything like that. I'd be okay with tabling it, but, and again, I'd also would prefer a person to come here and answer those questions, so I'm, I'm not against having a motion to deny, but also, I would have no problem tabling it either.
If this were the last stop, and we said no tonight, and nothing can happen, I would say, let's table it, but since he does have the appeal process, even if he's on vacation, unless it's a three-week vacation, he'll still have time when he gets back to file the appeal. So we do have a valid motion and a second on the floor, so let's vote and see how it comes out.
I was going to say, just, just let me reiterate, this is not brand-new news for this applicant. It's been going on since December. According to the notes, he did contact us at 12:31. Probably was given chapter and verse on what he needed to do, and here we are tonight, and nothing's been done. Thank you.
Then please vote. A yes vote is a vote to deny. And the request is denied by a vote of six to two. Silman, Lloyd, Richards, Reader, Hawkins, and Hibberts voting yes. Hawkins and Kemp voting no. Motion is denied, applicant does have the right to appeal. I'm assuming he'll get a letter informing him of such? Next item, please.
This is case 2019V031. Patrick and Susan McVeigh are requesting a variance to reduce the east side setback from 11.7 feet to 8.13 feet to accommodate a single-family residence. The location of the subject site is 7060 Pro-Am Court in Navarre. The subject site is in an R1 single-family residential zoning district. This is an area of the subject site and surrounding properties. It's a close-up area of the subject site, it's currently vegetated. The existing land use is vacant. The subject site is in a stormwater problem area. This is the proposed site plan, and as you can see, it's, it's pie-shaped and kind of an irregular-shaped lot. This is looking at the subject site. This is looking at the property to the east of the subject site. This is looking north, the subject site is behind us. This is another image on Pro-Am, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant or a representative? Once again, do we have the applicant or a representative?
Mr. Chairman, this seems to be a pretty straightforward case here, and I don't understand why they wouldn't be here, but I would think this is something that we can go ahead and, and move forward, but they're from Georgia, and that might be a long haul for them to get here for this, but it seems to be pretty straightforward to me that it's a foot and a half, or two foot on the back edge on both sides, and there's no one here to speak in opposition to it.
My concern is, it says represented by John Payne of Avant Price Builders Group LLC. You would think if the builder wants to build a house, he'd bother to show up. And then my other question was going to be, since this is in Tiger Point, which is a PUD, does it have to also be approved by the Architectural Review Committee?
And it could have.
Hidden Creek? Okay, same thing, it's going to probably have an Architectural Review Committee, but what's the pleasure of the board? I don't have a problem tabling or approving.
I make a motion to table. Make a motion to deny.
Got, got a motion to table on the floor first. Do I have a second on the table?
I'll second the table.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have to agree that if the builder wanted to build that home, he would be here. If the applicant, in fact, wanted that home built, he would make certain that he had representation at this board meeting.
Yeah, I think, I'd be willing to give a person the benefit of the doubt, you know, of getting here. I'm not going to force them to, I'm not going to vote to deny just because of that. I think this is pretty straightforward, and the reason why we have this variance process is a strange-shaped lot. They need less than three feet, or around three feet at the worst part, realistically about a foot and a half or two feet to build a house. Under any other circumstance, we'd say yes, but I'd, I'd be more than, I would absolutely, I'd approve this today if the other board, if the rest of the board would, would be there with me, but I'm also fine with tabling it, but I'm certainly not going to deny it on something that, it's the whole purpose, the whole reason that we're here is to, these things like this that don't fit in a typical line. If there is a review board process, that would be after us anyway, correct?
Correct.
You know, whether we say yes or, well, we say no, it doesn't matter, but if, if we say yes, the next step would be that, that other process, but again, I don't, I'd be willing to vote yes on this if the, if our table doesn't pass.
If the table doesn't pass, then I'll be ready to entertain any other motions.
I just want to make sure that the rest of the board knew how I felt, if we, if we'd rather do that, but the vote's on the floor, so, or the motion's on the floor.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was, just for, just for clarification, we actually had email correspondence with Mr. John Payne. It looks like this was on the 3rd of April, so he was, he was aware of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would have done a motion to approve, but out of the respect for my fellow board members and understanding while being here that most of y'all like the applicant to show up, and I think it's especially because you, Mr. Chairman, had questions to ask the applicant. Out of respect for the rest of my board, that's one of the reasons why I motioned to table, so, and it'll give them a chance to be able to answer your questions and also, but I believe that the, in that particular lot situation, it's, this is exactly why we have a planning and zoning board based on situations like this. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Then the only comment I would, actually, well, there are going to be a couple of them, but I'm not even sure, according to the property appraisers page here, that the, you know, the transactions went through yet. This might be one of those that he was holding on our behalf to buy the property, because according to, again, now, this could be delayed, but again, so, that's why I will, I will support tabling, but.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table with a second? Let's vote? Hasn't, hasn't come up yet. It hasn't come up yet. Motion to table passes. It is tabled.
Was anyone against it?
Yeah, I wanted to go ahead and hear it tonight, but.
Oh.
But we'll bring it up, we'll bring it up next month, and we'll be in Tiger Point. The next item was withdrawn, so we are now at item number eight. And I've had a request for a quick break before we go to number eight. So not using the clock back there, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 7:22. So let me understand what I heard. The house was compliant. He bought the lot next to him, and it makes the house non-compliant.
That's correct. The original setback when the house was built was a 10-foot-wide setback. He bought the lot to the west, and because it's greater than 90 feet, the setback for the size would be 15 feet.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Stephen Klein, 6455 Avenida de Galvez.
Anything to add?
No. Proposed addition is basically just paralleling the property line, so it's just extending the existing building, so it makes no further encroachment into the setback. And as Mr. Collins said, the addition of the other lot on the other side of the property is what basically increased the setback and has us in the situation we're in.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I would like to make a motion to approve without objection because this is one of those things that didn't make sense.
You beat me to the punch. But is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition before we approve this without objection? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, don't buy any more lamps.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, maybe not a serious one. If we denied it, he has to move his house, right?
Either that or sell the lot, so he's back in compliance. Next item, please. You don't have to stay here all night. We're the only ones that are nailed to the floor.
This is case 2019 v.034. KVMER Enterprises is requesting two variances. First variance is to reduce the front setback from 25 feet to 22 feet, and the second variance is to reduce the rear setback from 25 feet to 22 feet, and this is to accommodate a 1,000-square-foot mobile home that's currently existing on the property. Location of the subject site is 1975 Justice Circle and Golf Estates. This is an area of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is a close-up area of the subject site. Existing land use is vacant. This is the proposed site plan that was provided with the application. This is looking at the front of the residence. This is standing at the front of the residence, looking towards Justice Circle within the front setback. This is looking south along the rear of the property. This is an image looking north along the rear of the property, and that's all I have.
Do we have the applicant or a representative? Here we go again.
Mr. Chairman? I have a question. They obviously have purchased a mobile home and placed it on the site, and prior to asking for a variance, so now they're asking for a variance after it's already been moved into the location. Motion to deny. They're not here to answer any of these questions. And again, I feel like that a lot of the residents within the county feel like that they don't need to show up. It's just a rubber stamp.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Reading the applicant's package here under the variance request, it does say the project was green-lighted on an approved plot plan. So it very well might have been that their original thought was that the mobile home would fit on there till they got it there, and then realized that they were the three feet shy, is the only thing. But if it didn't say that project was green-lighted based on an approved plot plan, I definitely agree.
Well, we have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
I was curious as to if there are any residents here, or anyone here to speak in
Anyone pro or con? Still waiting for a second on the motion. Hearing none. Motion to deny fails.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification from staff, what happened with this particular case was it was submitted, it was reviewed, and it was approved by planning staff on the review of the plan. However, when our building inspectors went out and looked at it, realized they were over that line after the fact, and through clarification, it was actually misrepresented. It was not enough information on their site plan that was presented. Basically, instead of listing it out, the discussion was that they were expecting staff to break out the engineer rule or measure it, and since we didn't catch it, it was our fault, you know, because we approved it. So that's why you see it. Staff made them go through the variance process to get it before it could be signed off by the building department.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table.
Have a motion to table? Well, the motion on the floor died with lack of a second. So now I have a motion to table awaiting a second. Second. And we have a second. Any discussion on the motion to table?
Yeah, I think just as a point of conversation, I'm more comfortable with that. I mean, they should be here. So there's questions that I have. I don't understand why this thing is diagonal. I mean, you'd think a 1,000-foot trailer could fit on a plot this size and have plenty of room, but somehow, they found the only way to put this mobile home on here that does not fit in the setbacks. It's the only way possible. It's a miracle that they were able to accomplish that. And I'd like to know why on earth it's done that way, because it just doesn't, it seems like it doesn't need to, and I feel much comfortable if they were here to answer these questions. I'm not ready to deny it and make them go move it, but I'd like to know what the thought process is and why it's there, so, just my two cents.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might just jump in here real quick. I think, I think when they located the trailer on the piece of property, Mr. Reader, if the county went out there and looked at it, it's the way I understand, Sean, is that they were, they assumed that they were good, I guess, technically. Staff made them go through the variance process to get it before it could be signed off by the building department.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to table.
Have a motion to table. Well, the motion on the floor died with lack of a second. So now I have a motion to table awaiting a second. Second. And we have a second. Any discussion on the motion to table?
Yeah, I think just as a point of conversation, I'm more comfortable with that. I mean, they should be here. So there's questions that I have. I don't understand why this thing is diagonal. I mean, you'd think a 1,000-foot trailer could fit on a plot this size and have plenty of room, but somehow they found the only way to put this mobile home on here that does not fit in the setbacks. It's the only way possible. It's a miracle that they were able to accomplish that. And I'd like to know why on earth it's done that way because it just doesn't, seems like it doesn't need to, and I feel much comfortable if they were here to answer these questions. I'm not ready to deny it and make them go move it, but I'd like to know what the thought process is and why it's there. So just my two cents.
So we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion?
If I might just jump in here real quick. I think, I think when they located the trailer on the piece of property, Mr. Reader, if the county went out there and looked at it, as way I understand, Sean, is that they were, they assumed that they were good, I guess, technically. I sort of would agree. I'm not sure what, I don't know what kind of additional information we would get if the applicant was here. You understand what I'm saying? Other than to say, well, the county, we did it, we've staked it, we've already pulled the tires out from underneath it, we've already got the subject tank in, we're ready to move in, and we're three feet short on the front and the back. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I would agree if you guys want their applicant to be here so that you can ask him some questions, and I'm certainly, I'm certainly good with it, so.
I think I've really got some questions for the owner of the company that sold them and set up the mobile home. That's who I'd like to talk to. Because I can assure you that he probably knew that this thing was not going to fit in the setbacks. Gave planning and zoning some, a little bit of incomplete information, got it over there, got it set up, game, set, match. You know, it's like buying a used car. The minute it gets over that sidewalk, it's yours.
And I think, too, tabling it so that they're here, that at least brings that to their attention so they know who to go back to. But it looks like in some of the pictures, too, there's some stuff sitting on the back of the property, or it's either the next lot back. Okay, I got you.
Any further discussion on the motion to table? If not, please vote. This one passes unanimously, so we've added another item to next month's meeting. Next item.
This is case 2019 V. 037. Jeremiah Kaler is requesting two variances. The first one is to increase the height of a privacy fence from six feet to eight feet within the rear setback. And the second is to increase the height of the privacy fence from six to eight feet along the east and west side setbacks. Location of the subject site is 4345 Quiet Court in Gulf Breeze. Subject site is in an R1 single-family residential zoning district. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is a close-up, or this is a close-up aerial of the subject site. The existing land use is vacant. This is the proposed site plan that was provided with the application. There's currently a residence on the property. This is looking at the subject site from Central Parkway. There's currently some posts to outline where the fence is going to go. This is looking along the east side of the property. This is another image at the post, looking along the east side of the property. These posts are eight feet. This is looking north at the rear of the residence. And that's all I have.
Mr. Kaler, or a representative? Thanks for showing up.
Jeremiah Kaler, 4345 Quiet Court, Gulf Breeze.
Tell me what's going on, why you need the extra two feet?
So I recently built the home, and I don't, you know, newer homes are kind of being built up a lot higher than the surrounding homes. So right where the property line is or the setback, it's a pretty drastic slope. So before my, I only had one adjacent neighbor, and I now have a house being built right behind me. They're going to be the same height I am, so if I built a six-foot fence at the property line, I would be able to see over the fence from my porch, and they would be able to see back into me. So the privacy fence would not be very private.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I know this came up, I believe, last month at the Commissioners' zoning board, that we had a line-of-sight issue. And I guess, I don't know if it's, I assume that the east side on the Central Parkway side, is that your east side of the lot?
Yes.
Okay. What, and I'm just, you know, last month, we had an issue that we, this board passed it, it went to the Commissioners, they ended up denying it because of the line-of-sight there at that corner, which would be on Martha and Central. So that there is, that's where you want to put the eight foot as well, then?
Well, the stop sign is further up, so the actual eight-foot fence would be behind my driveway. It won't be anywhere near the corner. It won't block any visibility of any vehicles.
Okay. And do the school buses use that street by chance?
They do.
Central? Okay. I know they use Martha, I'm sure, but Central, yeah?
Yeah, and they, they don't turn down the cul-de-sac, they go straight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. I'd like to ask the board to table all fence variances and moving forward until such time we reach a decision with the Land Development Code that will allow us, because we're all over the board. We're approving some, we're not approving some, we approve some, they go to the County Commission, they're denying them. The Land Development Code specifically states that it's six-foot. And until such time that the Land Development Code is changed, then we should continue to follow the guidelines and the rules which are set forth before us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, then we'll go to Sean.
Go to Sean, and then I.
Okay. Mr. Ward.
So I just want to make a clarification, and I apologize to Mr. Kaler up here. The fence issue has come up quite frequently in front of this board. We currently have two or three variances for fence heights that come to this board probably every other meeting, and it's something that's continuous. So the Board of County Commissioners has directed staff to look at revising the Land Development Code. In a situation like this, the first thing that I would look at was our adjacent neighboring counties regarding fence heights, because this is a continuous issue with, regarding this board. Escamita County, Ocalusa County, the City of Gulf Breeze, they all allow an eight-foot privacy fence within their codes. That is something that I'm certainly going to be looking at revising the Land Development Code, and I would make that recommendation. I know, as of current, the Board of County Commissioners has directed staff not to make any immediate changes to the Land Development Code until one time and bring forth a box set together, I guess, a cumulative assumption. We're not here tonight to discuss amending the Land Development Code from six-foot to eight-foot. I certainly don't want to hold up future variance cases and move these through. But, you know, if there's discussion at the end of this meeting tonight, y'all want to discuss with that, we certainly can. You know, if there's something that you would recommend staff approve, all administratively or something like that, I'm fine with, and certainly can discuss with legal, but, you know, because we have not discussed with the, with the Board of County Commissioners. But that's the direction that staff is looking towards.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that this is a prime example of why we have a zoning board because of issues like that this applicant has brought up. There are a lot of fences that we've approved in the past. And frankly, this is, this is one of, this is private property. He would probably like privacy in his backyard. I'm 100% in favor of this, and I would make a motion to.
There's a motion on the floor.
Oh, there's a motion? I didn't, is that a motion?
No, it was, was commenting. We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay.
In fact, I haven't even asked if we have opposition from the audience yet.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience care to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Mr. Hibberts, was that a motion to suspend all future?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second for discussion.
For discussion.
The problem I have with that is if we suspend it, where does it leave this gentleman? He's kind of in limbo. You know, what's he going to do? He's got some posts sticking up out of the ground, he can't do anything with them. I'm inclined to give him what he's requesting and let him take his chances with the County Commission.
Well, he can also comply with the Land Development Code at six feet.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
I'm not going to hold our citizens hostage over a Land Development Code that needs to be updated. If I were writing it, I wouldn't care if a person did a 10- or 12-foot fence. It's their property, they can do what they want. If they don't want me looking over their fence, I'm six feet tall, I can see over a six-foot fence very easily. If they don't want other people doing the same, but I'm not going to sit here and tell a person they can't do an eight-foot fence just because our development code needs to be updated. I'm not going to tell them, need to wait until we do. So I don't think we've been all over the board on this. I think we've approved about every one of them that's asked for an eight-foot fence. The only one that got reversed by the Commissioners was about a line-of-sight. I don't agree with it. I don't think there was a problem with line-of-sight, but there was, I guess, the, someone could make an argument, I suppose, if you're 10 feet behind the stop sign, that maybe you can't see in front of it. But as far, up to my knowledge, that's the only one that the Commissioners did not agree with us on. But again, I just, I hate to, we have these provisions for a reason, but at the end of the day, this, he owns this, this property, and I think he's well within his rights to make a fence, so he has privacy in his backyard, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Well, we have a motion on the floor we got to deal with first.
I thought that one died.
No, he got a second for discussion, so.
The only other thing I'm going to say, the motion is stated, with all due respect, basically removes one of the functions of this board. You know, we're here to take a look at variances, and if it makes sense, we give the variance. If it doesn't, the Land Development Code is something that's completely out of our venue. That's something else, something that someone else has to take care of. And for us to step in and say, well, we're just going to suspend all these applications in the future until something happens with the Land Development Code, I don't believe you can do that.
Well, would you like to withdraw your second?
I will withdraw my second.
Does anyone else care to second the motion on the floor? Hearing none, that motion dies. Do I hear another motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. End point of discussion. I would hate to tell this man no, and in three months down the road, we revise the Land Development Code and go to an eight-foot fence. So I'm strongly in favor of approving. Please vote. And it passes seven to one. Silman Lloyd Richards, Hawkins, Reader, Hawkins, and Kemp in favor, Mr. Hibberts in opposition. Thank you, sir, and enjoy your fence.
Thanks for your time.
Next item, please. And we've already heard number 11, so we're moving to number 12, Pace Church of Christ. And while he's moving to that, the reason I brought that one up was there was a 92-year-old and a 95-year-old sitting in the audience with that applicant, and I didn't want them to have to sit here till quarter to eight. Mr. Collins.
This is case 2019 V. 039. Pace Church of Christ is requesting a variance eliminate landscape buffer C along the west property line. Location of the subject site is 4075 Berry Hill Road in Pace. The subject site is in an HCD Highway Commercial Development zoning district. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is a close-up aerial of the subject site. The existing land use is institution. There are currently two variances approvals for this site. They've got two driveway spacing variances approved in 2017. This is the proposed site plan that was provided with the application. This is looking at the subject site. This is looking north, the subject site is on our right. This is looking west, the subject site is behind us. This is looking south, the subject site is on our left. I want to note there is an existing landscape buffer along the west side of the property. And that's all I have.
We have the applicant or a representative? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Luke Shows. My address is 1794 Lorain Circle Cantonment, and I'm in the Wright County, I believe, though.
Anything to add?
Yes, sir. So I'm on the building committee, that's why I'm speaking. We just recently completed a new building with some site work that was required. Unfortunately, we were not aware that a change was made to the plans, I guess, as part of the development order. And it was, I don't know that it would have changed anything, we still would be requesting the variance, but anyway, we, we were not aware that we had this landscape buffer to install until maybe two or three months ago, when we happened upon it. And we don't want to put it in because it's a heavily wooded lot next door. A landscape buffer, we do not believe would survive there because of the oaks. I do have aerial photos and some photos from the ground that would show that. Unfortunately, I didn't bring 12 copies, so I'm happy to hand this to anyone that might want to see it. We have talked to the property owners next door, and we have an agreement, which I believe you guys have a copy of in your package, stating that they are okay with us putting up a six-foot privacy fence. And so that is what we're asking to do in place of putting in this landscape buffer, which would be much more expensive for us, and we don't believe it would do well, given the fact that the owner, the neighbor's oaks are already growing up over the property anyway.
Okay. So if I understand the request correctly, instead of tearing out the natural vegetation that God put there and putting something else in its place, you want to leave it like it is and put a fence up?
Yes, sir.
And everybody on both sides of the fence agrees?
Yes, sir.
Makes sense to me. Anybody in the audience disagree? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve without objection.
Hearing none. Thank you for your patience being here, and congratulations on the church growing. Next item, please.
I don't want God mad at me.
This is case 2019 CU 008. SFJ Tiger Point LLC, represented by Fred Jenkins of Titan Specialty Construction, is requesting a conditional use to allow limited manufacturing assembly, specifically an aluminum metal fabrication business in an HCD zoning district. The location of the subject site is 3371 Gulf Breeze Parkway in Gulf Breeze. It's currently in the Wind Dixie Plaza. Subject site is in an HCD zoning district. This is an aerial of the subject site and surrounding properties. This is a close-up aerial of the subject site. Future land use is commercial. The existing land use is commercial. Part of the subject site is in a stormwater problem area. This is the proposed site plan that was provided with the application. The yellow highlights were the proposed vacant spaces for the conditional use. This is an image of the subject site in that vacant space. There are several stores within the shopping plaza, including the Bell's Outlet in the Wind Dixie. This is, this is looking from Highway 98. Subject site sits behind the CVS Pharmacy. This is an image of the CVS Pharmacy in front of the subject site. This is looking at the proposed display area. This is looking along the rear of the property, behind the store. This is looking at some existing apartments behind the complex. And that's all I have.
Do we have the applicant or a representative? Again, do we have the applicant or a representative?
I had a phone call from the applicant. He had a, he had a doctor's appointment, so he wasn't sure if he was going to make it to this meeting. But he wanted you guys to move forward with the request.
Mr. Chairman, can we just move this to the back of the agenda just in case he gets here, and then talk. he gets here, and then talk about it then?
We can do so. Let's just push it, and we'll bring it back up. Don't let me forget.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, what was, is light manufacturing? What is light manufacturing for that facility?
That was one of the questions I wanted to ask the applicant. Uh, aluminum metal fabrication could be lots of things, and, uh...
Should he not be able to attend as a result of some medical concerns? If he's not, can we just table this?
That's why we want to push it to the end of the meeting, see if he shows up, and then we'll take it to the, to the next level of deciding if we want to, uh, to push it back. So let's, uh, move on to the Bell Lane project, which is a rezoning.
This is case 2019 R.017. Bell Lane Limited Partnership, uh, represented by Joni Madri, is proposing to rezone 9.45 acres from Ag.RR to R2 Medium Density Residential and make no change to the future land use of mixed residential commercial. Location of the subject site is on Bell Lane in Pace. Subject site is in an Ag.RR Rural Residential Agriculture zoning district. The proposed zoning is R2 Medium Density Residential. Um, the subject site is on the east side of Bell Lane. This is an area of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is a close-up area of the subject site. The future land use is mixed residential commercial. The existing land use is vacant. The subject site is in a stormwater problem area. In 2002 and 2011, the future land use for the subject properties were changed to mixed residential commercial. 2017, the BOCC approved, uh, 398 acres to be rezoned to, from Ag.RR to R1. And to the east of the subject site. In 2018, the parcels to the south of the subject site were rezoned, uh, to R2. This is looking at the subject site. The site is currently vegetated. This is looking south along Bell Lane. The subject site is on our left. This is looking west across Bell Lane. The subject site is behind us. This is looking north. The subject site is on our right. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant or a representative? Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please. And you can pull that mic down.
My name is Joni Madri, and my address is 4229 Highway 90 Pace. I work for Mr. Henry, who could not be here. Um, as was said, we have other properties that were rezoned last year in the beginning of this year to R2, which is on the east side of this property. This consists of a mixed-use residential commercial category. Um, the infrastructure that has been placed in there over the last prior years, um, is, can support anything that goes in there, and we have already spoken with Pace Water Company, and if anything, um, that we had to put in a well site or anything like that, that is what we would have to do. Right now, there are no definite plans for the property. Um, what has been thrown around is that we are trying to, based on the Pace Plan, um, put in some housing that would benefit the, um, senior generation. There's nothing like that, where they would be able to go in and have it, maybe an activity center within a townhouse unit complex. And, um, based on that information, and based on the rezoning for the properties to the south of it and to the west of it, we are asking that the board approve these last pieces of property for R2. That's all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience to speak on this request? Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The, the usage was changed to, to mixed residential, but not the zoning. Why didn't we just do the zoning then at the same time of the usage? Is there, was there a reason for that, or?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, I was actually in Danny's position, um, back in 2008, 2007 or so, when this came through. Typically, what would happen is the, the developer of the property will amend the future land use with the intent that in the future, they will come back and change the zoning. Taxes change when you change the zoning, whereas not the future land use. Um, so that's primarily, you know, in this situation here, where he sat on this property for the past decade or so, and then as time has, has come forward, he's decided to go ahead and rezone it because his taxes will increase on that.
That answers my question. And to go along with it, and I've said this before with these properties on Bell Lane, I really like moving some things away from Highway 90. Um, I live, actually, I'd saw where my house is being built on that, on one of those maps, so I live right near here, and we need something that's not sitting on Highway 90. Most cities are, are set up on a grid, and through Pace, everything is slammed up on 90, and then it goes up One Road, Woodbine Road. Um, so having something else we can relieve pressure on with both housing and shops and things like that, I think would do a lot to relieve some of that pressure on 90. So I'm, I'm in favor of getting something off of Highway 90, and this, this is a good spot for it. There's, there's plenty of, of land there and plenty of area. Um, me personally, I'd rather see R1 than R2, but I'm also not, I'm also not the one developing it, so, um, but, uh, my support is there.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Oh, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, R1 is all behind that. We had that rezoned several, several years ago, and there's like 300 and some odd acres behind it that is R1, so they butt each other.
I think Mr. Henry's got a grand vision for this property. Uh, last month, he was before us on some of the adjoining parcels, and, uh, I think he's looking way down the road for us.
Yeah, like I said, I'm excited with the way they're building the project. And it's hard to see from here, but I've, I've been on this board for almost four, probably almost five years now, and, and along that time, I've seen these and heard descriptions of what they're trying to do there with making sure that they're not just houses, but also, you know, people there will have things they can do without having to even get on Highway 90. There, there'll be stores and shops and stuff attached to there that they can actually get to without even being on Bell Lane, some of it just behind there. So I think overall, it's, it's definitely a project that I'm excited about seeing. If, no other reason taking pressure off of Highway 90, but putting people in in a smart way where they have support and services in that spot, too, that also serves Avalon Boulevard and can get to the interstate. Um, again, staying off of Highway 90, but can still get to the interstate and get to Pensacola without, without clogging things up, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Second. Okay. We had discussion, Mr. Kemp. I believe you had a question. Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion?
I just want to say I completely 100% agree with, uh, Mr. Reader. He couldn't have said it better, so I, I support it. Thank you.
I do have one other question, maybe for staff. Do you know what the, um, do they have any plans for, for Wood, I mean, not Woodbine, excuse me, what am I thinking? Good gracious, for Bell Lane, widening of Bell Lane, the increase?
As of current, it's not being studied, but obviously the right-of-way is there, uh, especially on Sterling and for Bell. So, uh, it was something, again, that timeframe when 08, 07, 08 timeframe, prior to the recession, um, the county did look at proportionate fair share and looking at some, some improvements there, so it's, it is in the process.
Yeah, I think it, originally, it was built to be where it could be a much wider road. That lot, right-of-way there is both Bell Lane and, uh, Sinamid, if I'm not mistaken. They're both really, Sinamid is a really, really wide roadway, so it's there. We just, obviously, we get the housing and the tax dollars from that. I think we'll be able to use that to, to widen the road, but.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. And this is a recommendation. It still goes before the county commission for final approval. Next item.
This is case 2019 R.018. Black Oak Ranch LLC is proposing to rezone 82 acres from R1 and Mixed Residential Subdivision to Ag.RR Rural Residential Agriculture and make no change to existing future land use. Applicant's downzoning, uh, to use, you know, for livestock uses. The location of the subject site is 4535 Black Oak Road in Milton. Subject site is currently zoned R1 and Mixed Residential Subdivision, and, uh, just south And this is a map of the proposed zoning of Ag.RR. This is an area of the subject site and the surrounding properties. This is a close-up area of the subject site. The future land use is single-family residential with conservation recreation, uh, just to the south of the parcel. The existing land use is a combination of vacant land and recreation. There may be a potential of wetlands on the subject site. That was indicated by the National Wetlands Inventory Map. This is looking at the subject site. This is looking south along Black Oak Road. The subject site is on our right. This is looking east. The subject site is behind us. This is looking north. The subject site is on our left, and that's all I have.
Do we have the applicant or a representative? Applicant or a representative?
I wonder what's going on. Danny, did you send out notifications?
There's gotta be something exciting we didn't know about, huh?
There's something going on. We never heard that one.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? I see a hand back there. Come on up and tell me what's going on.
I just wanted to ask.
Okay. Come on up to the microphone.
I really don't know this person.
Just wait till you get to the microphone. Give me your name and address, so the court reporter can get everything down. And we're also streaming live around the world on the internet, and, uh, there may be one or two people watching.
I, I just want to know why, why, I just want to know why do he want to rezone that area? What, what is the purpose?
If I was guessing, it would be to reduce property taxes on it if he's not doing anything with it, but I also said he, that he may be grazing some cattle out there. So that was gonna be one of my questions, too, since it's a bunch right next to some residential. Is he gonna be buffering, you know, the cattle stuff? But, uh, he's not here, so we can't ask the questions. So I really can't give you a full answer, other than it reduces his property tax burden.
No wonder why he's not here.
Motion to table?
So I guess it'll pass.
Second.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, just kind of the same thing. If, I hope, if I'd have been drinking something, I read this, see that someone's downzoning, I would have spit out what I was, what I was drinking. Um, I, you know, I don't have a problem with downzoning at all. Um, I mean, I, I think there's some questions that probably need to be asked, and it doesn't hurt to know what they're, what they're wanting to do. Is it cattle? Is it just to reduce property taxes? Um, the, the commissioners are gonna hear this either way. If we table it, well, then that's a whole nother 30 days plus two weeks.
Forty-five days or more.
Right, 45 days. I, I'd actually be okay with, with approving this myself and, and letting, you know, and the commissioners decide if they'll hear it or not with the person out there. They probably, I don't know what they do, but, um, this to me, unless there's something crazy going on, I'm, I'm great with downzoning anywhere we can. Um, that's just, I know we have a, I guess, a motion and a second to table, but, um, I'd, I'd rather go ahead and approve it, to downzone it, and then, in, in two weeks, that the commissioner's gonna hear it either way.
If we vote either way, they're gonna hear it. If we vote to table it, it's gonna push it a month and a half, if not more. But we do have a motion and a second on the floor, so let's see what the will of the board is, if we want to table or if we want to deny the table motion and come back and vote. Uh, Mr. Lloyd?
Mr. Chairman, I've just got a quick question. What is the, maybe this is for staff, but what is the, uh, conservation recreation? How did that get right there in the middle of the single-family residence? I mean, what, what was it, was it something that had been done in the past, or that was zoned that way, or what?
If you give me a moment, I can look up the history on it and see if it was actually any rezonings or anything on that property. I can tell you from staff's perspective as regarding the downzoning on that, he's not, he's not changing his future land use, which is the state process. He is just amending the rezoning or the zoning district. So that's typically what we see, um, in-house, is that somebody will, will downzone the property to ag, and that gives the property appraiser more justification to give him an ag exempt for that piece of property. Um, so that, that's probably the reason behind it. Again, I can't speak for the applicant himself, but, um, bear with me here for a second. I'll find out.
That's okay. I, I really don't have any problem. I, I would agree with Mr. Reader that I, you know, downzoning, I mean, goodness, to give the guy some relief. I mean, it would be nice to hear the answer to the question.
It's one more barrier before he can build. He'd have to come back and put it back if he's gonna do R1 anyway, so.
What's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion to table, so let's vote on that.
I can withdraw the motion to table if, if that is more appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, is if, uh, to hear from the other board members, because I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Richards on, I, I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Reader on approving it now. It is downzoning, uh, but I still want to respect the board and knowing what y'all's take on the whole thing.
My biggest concern was, we don't know for sure what the applicant's doing. I went out there and looked at it. There is water on the property, so there is a lot of, I think that's why it's conservation, because you can't build water like that. But I don't know that for, other than just observing.
That's why I wanted to ask a few questions of what were his plans for ag, since it does a butt directly to some residential.
That's why I was gonna say.
Don't, don't want to see a pig farm, but the commissioner's the one that get paid to make that final decision anyway, and, uh, they may do the same thing if he's not there for them. They may table. So if the motion was withdrawn for tabling, do I hear a motion? Any other action?
I'll, I'll stick with, uh, based on the fact that you two got questions for the applicant, uh, I'll stick with the motion.
The motion to table? Do we have, did you withdraw your second?
Well, that wasn't my second.
I was the one that seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would withdraw the motion, but apparently there's enough people who want to vote on it, so we'll vote on it and then see.
Okay. Well, let's vote on the motion to table. The motion to table fails, so let's take action on the item. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Will the tally machine allow us to vote again? Do we need to do a hand vote? It's there, so this is a motion to approve. And that motion passes seven to one. Uh, Silman Lloyd Richards, Hawkins, Reader, Hawkins, Kemp in favor, Mr. Hibberts opposed. That is a recommendation. Moves to the county commission. They will make the final decision on that item.
The motion to approve, we table it?
Yes.
No. No, Mr. Stone.
Next item, rezoning and small-scale amendment.
This is case 2019 R.019. LL and B. LLC is proposing to rezone 9.39 acres from R1 to P2 Active Park and change the future land use from Garson Point Single Family Residential to Conservation Recreation. And the proposed use, um, or the reason for this rezoning is the applicant wants to, um, construct an RV park. Subject site is located on the corner.
Subject site is located on the corner of Michael Drive and Morrow Road in the Garson Point area. Subject site is in an R1 single-family residential zoning district. The proposed zoning is P2 Active Park. There is, uh, the subject site is surrounded by R1 on all sides. This is an area of the subject site and surrounding properties. This is a close-up area of the subject site. The future land use is Garson Point Single Family Residential. The proposed future land use is conservation recreation. This is looking at the subject site. This is, uh, looking west at the subject site. This is looking north at the subject site. This is looking east at the entrance to the property from Michael Drive. And this is another aerial outlining, uh, the subject site. And that's all I have.
Do we have the applicant?
Yes.
It's been waiting, huh?
Yes, it is, we're hoping.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Jerry Bennett, and my address is 4391 Highway 90, Pace. We have owned this property since, uh, I think, before 2000, and it was, at one time, an RV And Ivan washed it away, damaged it a lot. It still has its sewer system in, it still has its, uh, underground water, and we've always kept the state health department license as an RV park on it. The, after Ivan, uh, we had a potential buyer on this that came to the board and got zoning changed to a PUD. Unfortunately, he couldn't get the money to build the PUDs, so the sale never closed. And, uh, we have been there trying to keep it clean, very damaged it place, the vandals come down there. I've got several pictures here in this folder showing some of the things they do. We had, uh, seawalls there, they tear the seawalls out and burn them, use them as, as, uh, as, uh, kindling for fires, lots of drinking down there, and, uh, we've taken care of it and cleaned it up over these years. We have a, we've decided it needs to go back to an RV park since the flood zone has been raised so high now. And we're asking the, the board to give us the zoning back and let us have it as, as an RV park again. Intend to put a very nice upscale RV park in there.
Any questions from the board? Have a seat. I think we may have a few folks here that wanna, wanna speak on this item.
I'm sure they do.
Come on up, give me name and address for the record. And just so you know, I am keeping time, you took about eight minutes, almost reserved seven minutes for you for rebuttal. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, sir. My name is Ben Menifee. I live at 5605 Michael Drive here in Milton. The property adjacent to the campground. Uh, let's see. We just wanna address, uh, some infrastructure and, um, safety concerns with the area. We had a community meeting last week at, at our property, and all of Michael Drive attended, and these are some of the main concerns. Uh, let's see, sewage issues. We've had, recently had sewage issues out there, citizens not handling our residential sewage. Pace, uh, Pace Water was out in the last 60 days, working on this, but, again, that's for our current residents, and we're still having issues. The issue, the area has a flooding issue, so drainage and runoff is another concern. And there's been multiple, uh, county, uh, reports filed, work orders, if you will, uh, to come and correct some of the drainage issues. They, they've brought out excavators and dug the ditches out a little bit to try to give us a little relief. And safety, the, uh, the roads, if you come, when you turn off a bad line onto Pearson to go back to the campground, as, um, the owner mentioned earlier, there's a lot of riffraff that comes back there, and they party and whatnot while they speed down the roads, and I've watched on my security camera and calculated some 70 miles an hour, some of those guys, on a 25 mile an hour road. You know, so, uh, I have a granddaughter that lives with me, and I'm, as you can tell, disabled, and, uh, so safety's a big issue, concern of mine there. I've put a proposal to have a four-way stop put on Pearson and Michael to slow that down, and I haven't heard back. We've, uh, there's a dirt road as you pass Michael on Pearson, and folks, I mean, literally, they'll leave the road, there's a drop-off there, and their tires will leave the road, and you'll see the cars bounce, and a stop sign would help alleviate some of that. So that, you know, so safety, widening the roads are not very wide. Um, I'm pretty sure you can see in the county reports, there's been two accidents in the last, I don't know how many months. A car flipped over on Pearson, couldn't make the turn on the narrow road, flipped over and injured a couple folks, because, again, speeding's an issue. Another young man on a motorcycle, he's out there all the time, up and down, he rolled his bike and tore himself up out there, landed in a ditch, you know, because there's no, nothing to slow these guys down. So these are our main concerns as residents on Michael Drive, or safety, sewage, and runoff, uh, that could, could happen in that area. Let's see, and I believe, I'll, um, that's all the concerns we have right now that I'll bring up. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, are you all opposed to the RV park in general? Could, you know, could understanding, if you have an RV park, you're not gonna have the, the problems.
Well, the, the RV park, you know, I'm not opposed to personally, and, uh, but I'd, I'd like to see the infrastructure changed, you know, issues taken care of, um, the safety and the sewage. I know they have septic, you know, they say they still have that in place, but, you know, I mean, is that, I don't know how that's gonna affect our community in the long haul with their old system, if things are gonna be replaced and updated.
Right. And, and, you know, just so you know, sir, we got a letter here from the Pace Sewer, or Pace Water System, saying that they do have a three-inch low-pressure system that might require it to be updated, and they understand that. So they would be responsible for updating it, you know, at their cost, actually, it says here. And they would have to have, uh, in, you know, insurance and building permits and all that prior to. And the reason I ask you if you were opposed, we had the same kind of issue, I believe, last month, that there was another RV park wanting to come in, and neighbors were just adamantly against it.
Right.
So I just wanted to get your take, if you were adamantly against it or just concerned about the infrastructure.
As a community, as a community, at our, at our meeting the other week, the majority was opposed, yes. So I'm here speaking on behalf of everyone from the meeting, the notes that were taken. Uh, majority, they did not want an RV park there, because of all the extra traffic that's coming in, it's already congested, and, um, you know, it's, um, with the folks that come in and roll out now, in and out, it's here and there, but this would be a constant flow of traffic, you know, and, uh, so, and we don't know what that's gonna bring. Of course, you guys don't either, but the, the community as a whole, on Michael Drive and Pearson that showed up at the meeting, they were opposed to, uh, an RV park reopening. Thank you for your time, sir.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the applicant. Uh, were you here by chance when he had the RV park originally?
Uh, no, sir, I didn't live in the area at the time.
Okay. Yeah, the reason why I ask, I wanted to see what it was like as far as people and, and all that at that time. But, uh, but also, uh, to Scott's question, uh, the, uh, the last RV park that we debated last month, I think is a lot different than this situation. Uh, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up, name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bill Baker. My wife, Robin, and I live at 5556 Michael Drive. We are actually the, the only property that's adjacent to, um, the property that's being discussed. Um, I don't oppose the, uh, RV park going in there, but we do have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. You ask if anyone lived there, uh, the RV park was there when we built our house in, uh, 2002, and as Mr. Bennett said, it was, uh, washed out during Ivan in, uh, 2004. Um, so we didn't have a problem with that. The, the question that I have is, uh, when it was an RV park before, there were a couple of mobile homes on some of the property. Um, I would be opposed to mobile homes on the property, I'm not opposed to an upscale RV park. Uh, the concern that we have is Michael Drive has some real bad flooding issues, and there's some flooding that comes, uh, is runoff that comes down, actually, the north side of our property. If you're looking on your, uh, on your map that you had earlier, the RV park in Michael Drive goes here, we're actually right in behind, um, the, the place that was the RV park before. So my, my big concern would be to make sure that something is done about the drainage. I know they had a couple of duck ponds and some other stuff in the property when it's open back in the early 2000s. So, um, so it's really the, the question about whether mobile homes would be there, um, and perhaps we could hear a little bit more, or maybe it's at some later date, about, um, what type of, um, rules they were gonna have as far as tent camping and long-term camping and, and some of those things. Thank you.
If I could, sir, if I could, real quick, let me just address one thing on stormwater runoff. One of the requirements would be that anything that they do is going to have to have a comprehensive stormwater program that's in compliance with the Land Development Code, which means that any runoff, any water that's generated on that property stays on that property.
Yeah, and the, the biggest problem for Michael Drive is that the, I guess, the county doesn't own any right-of-way to either side of the road. Uh, you know, there's the road, so there's no, there's no place for ditches to be dug or, or culverts or anything like that. I mean, it's just the roadway and, and everything floods, and a lot of it comes up.
And I was, I was down there this afternoon, kinda knocking on doors, trying to talk to folks, and I may have gone to your house and rang a doorbell, but...
You'd have to, you'd have to really look. If you, if you, if you know the RV park property, there's a, a chain-link fence that goes down the east side of it.
I rang your doorbell, but y'all must not have been home.
Oh, you did? Well, yeah, we just got back with our, we were on an RV trip, so we just got back.
I talked to, uh, I talked to the neighbor.
That's why I'm not opposed to it. We have a, we have a mobile home now, so.
I talked to the neighbor just, just above you, that lady said she'd lived there for about 35 years, and...
No, that's not Kim.
Basically, her position was, anything that's gonna clean up the problem that you're having down there with the, I don't wanna say criminal element, but, you know...
You can say criminal elements, probably done.
She was, you know, she was all on board with that, anything that would eliminate that.
Yeah, that's what, you know, we were there, we built, as I said, we built our house in 2002, so we were there, and, uh, my wife's family owned the, uh, property that we're on since the, probably the early 50s, and so we've, we've been there with the RV park there a good bit. Just wanna make sure that it, it is upscale. Uh, I do have questions about the mobile homes and the, you know, extended long-term camping and rundown campers and that sort of stuff.
And those, those are gonna be questions that I'm gonna ask the applicant also.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other, other neighbors wanna speak before we start? Some more questions to the applicant. Come on up, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, while she's coming up, I, I was gonna note, last, last month, I think the issue was, we didn't feel like that area was gonna be for vacation stays, it was, looked like it was only gonna be for long-term and living and things like that. Um, with this one right there on the water, I think that's kind of more similar like Fort Pickens where it is. They'd make a lot more money doing weekend and week-long rentals than they would having somebody stick a mobile home on there and live there, you know, pay monthly, but, but that was last month, that one, it looked like it was gonna be for long-term stays, you know, or living, people living there, and that's, we wanted to make sure that clarification was there.
Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please. And you can pull the mic down. Thank you.
Lynn Galbreth, 5600 Michael Drive, and I'm right by Pearson Road. Some of the concerns that we have, we're not, I'm not against the park, 'cause we've lived there 31 years. We moved there in 1988 when it was a dirt road, and there was an RV park down there, and, uh, we didn't have any problems, nor with the second RV park that was there. And, but there are concerns when you've got RVs coming down Pearson Road, that they're not going to be able to pass each other. One'll have to pull off the road, because we've had, uh, the school bus run the garbage truck into about a three-foot ditch, and so that is a problem. The only other thing that I have is, our road is really special on Michael Drive, where my neighbors are all there, we look after each other's kids, it's the old-timey way, you know, when the kids got out and rollerskate and bicycled and all those great things, and, um, having RVs come up and down our road is not acceptable, because we can't protect the kids, and it's narrow also. If it comes up Pearson and goes, that would be fine, but I would like for something to be done to keep the RV traffic off of Michael, of our neighborhood. Another thing, some of them said, uh, make sure, see what will happen to property values. And, um, what was the other one, Tanya?
Access to water.
Oh, yes, and then we were wondering about, with the other two RVs, campgrounds, the neighbors had access to go down to the beach, and that's something the kids like to go do. And the neighbors go down and try to help pick up quite a bit. And, but, we definitely don't like the drugs and the alcohol and the things that go on down there, and I think, uh, this, if it's a nice RV park, that will take care of that. And, uh, also sewage, I know there were septic tanks down there, and the sewage system ends right at the end of our road, where Michael, right before Pearson. And so I imagine they will have to put in either more septic tanks for, since there's a lot of RVs they're talking about, or to extend the sewage line. And those are just some things that, uh, we appreciate y'all listening to, and we would like for them to, um, give us some, um, make us feel good about it going in.
Okay.
That they can do.
Just one que, looking at the map, from Pearson to the park is only Michael Drive. You're just saying you don't want them going further east down Michael, past Pearson?
Right, just, right, 'cause our neighborhood is about, I don't, how many houses do we have? About 20, 30?
37.
37 houses. At one point, we had 40 kids on our block, our stretch, and I don't know how many we have now, 'cause we've had people move out and, and come, so we, it's, that's a real big concern, for not having RV traffic.
Let's talk to the applicant, see if we can get some answers. Unless anyone else has something new they wanna add in, let's bring the applicant back up and, uh, see if we can get some answers and...
And, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, if I can have Laverne pull up the, the last slide of this presentation, I just wanted to verify something that the, the individual said. Um, first of all, um, mobile homes would be prohibited, so we don't allow mobile homes in the P2 zoning district, so that would not be allowed. Um, regarding, and, and I'll certainly allow the applicant to do that, but, um, looking at a zoomed-out picture of the location here, um, Michael Drive is a straight shot to Avalon Boulevard, whereas Pearson kind of winds and meanders through there, so, um...
It's not. It's not.
That's not correct.
Not, put it back.
All right, go back. But, so it, I mean, I don't know if Pearson would be the, the prime route, and I'll certainly leave that up to the applicant, I mean, uh, looking at the thing. One of the pictures that I actually asked, um, Danny to include in here was the access to the waterway, um, and that was one of the last slides in the presentation here. There's been quite a few comments regarding residents having access to the water and such. As it is currently, they do not have access. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners actually vacated this portion of Michael Drive back in about 2006, uh, so all of that property is currently owned by the applicant themselves, so the neighbors do not have access, even though right now there's nothing there, um, and they've been going down and enjoying the water and things like that. That access has not been there since 2006.
Tell me about your targeted... Question. If you, let me approach the bench, and I'll give you a couple of pictures here that we've taken here...
we've taken here, it's, what we're trying to do down there is clean this...
Bring them up, and then get back to the mic to talk, so everybody can hear you, and I'll pass them around.
...of what's the damage that's been caused down there. This van...
She can turn it off, that's fine.
So, real quick, they had mentioned that, if you look at this map here, it looks like Michael Drive goes all the way back to where your entrance would be. Where does it actually go if not, if not straight off of Michael?
I'm not sure of what you're asking.
They, we were under the impression that Michael Drive goes straight from this property out to Avalon Boulevard, and someone mentioned that.
No, it does not.
Okay.
It does not. Pearson is the preferred route to get there. That, if you go past, if you turn off of Pearson and go into, go towards the water, Michael Drive also goes back to the east, but it does not go straight back to the, it makes quite a few curves back there, and it certainly would not be the preferred route for any RV to try making those turns.
So would you, with permission of the county, put signage trying to direct people the proper way in and the proper way out?
I don't think we ever had any problem with that before. We had signage out there, and I don't ever remember anybody coming from the way that they were afraid that was happening, but, you know, somebody might have wandered through there at some point.
So what would you, what's your target? Are you looking for daily, weekly, monthly, six months? What's your target?
We don't want people to stay there a long time. You hit it right on the nose when we want, we want people to come in...
Step a little bit closer to the, there you go.
We want people to stay there a few days and enjoy theirselves, and go on and bring others. So it's much more profitable to have them come in and stay just a few days.
Okay, yeah. For full disclosure, I keep books for one of the RV parks in the north end of the county, and I know that if it's a monthly, you can charge them for electricity. If it's past six months, you don't have to collect the sales tax and the bed tax, but sometimes you've got snowbirds that want to come down for three or four months. Would you be doing a monthly rental, or is you going to strictly be nightly and weekly?
We certainly haven't looked at it from that standpoint yet, and I can tell you that the, we're all three of us are RVers and been RVers since the 70s, and we much prefer the higher-class RVs, and that's our intention to get that.
So would you be looking at, in your development plan, putting in paved pads, paved roads?
Absolutely.
Swimming pool, poolhouse?
Don't know about swimming pool and poolhouse, but certainly the paved roads. That's still in the planning stage.
But you understand the stormwater retention and...
Yeah, I wanted to address that also. The county, the county has turned all of that water coming from the eastern portion of Michael Drive and also Pearson Road, they've turned it down Michael Drive to go right to the bay, and it's devastating the way the county did it. And I agree with the folks down there. Something has to be done about that portion of it. I don't know what they can do. I think that there's obviously something they can do, but unfortunately, we haven't got any cooperation along that line yet, and I can see these people are very concerned about it, excuse me, very concerned about it also.
Okay. I don't want to take up all the board's time. Other questions from other board members?
I've got a quick question. Mr. Bennett, how many units are you planning for there?
We haven't got to that stage yet, because we thought we would have some problems of getting it zoned, and it's very expensive to have all of that designed yet. We have, eventually, we have continued to purchase property in that area ever since, well, we started buying, and we've added to it, and we've got several more acres there that, we own most of, own that Michael Drive. There's a few parcels, about three or four, that we don't own, but most of the parcels we do own, and they're not included in this proposal.
Is it your intent to pump your sewage via, like a lift station or something, out to the end of it?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Out there?
It'll have sewage.
It might be, it might be to your advantage if the county, and this certainly would be something with the commissioners, if the commissioners have turned the stormwater lease on your, on your property down through there to the bay, and I don't know, you know, they may come back in and put in a pipe or something other down through there to carry it on down to the end.
Wish y'all would propose that to them.
If that's, you know what I mean? Rather than...
Help us out on that, because they have not, they've not been real cooperative about doing that yet.
Let me throw another question.
And we are not, I mean, I don't think we personally, in what we're proposing, is going to cause any stormwater, more stormwater. It's just, ours goes directly to the bay, and...
I would think with the pads, if you had pads in there, probably no bigger than they are, even if you had some swells where the water could get treated as well as before it entered into the bay, you probably could get some kind of, you know, relief from that or whatever, just something to be able to convey the...
This group here has done quite a bit of developing in this county, and we're well familiar with all the things we have to jump through, and we've done several big subdivisions.
And certainly from a runoff standpoint, it'd be better than having a house, or four houses per acre under R1, for sure, I would think.
Plans for camp store, basically just selling basic RV supplies, or any retail sales at all?
You would have to have some basic RV supplies there at the office. I mean, it's just almost mandatory that you have something of that nature.
No plans for nighttime entertainment, no pier with a bar or anything like that?
No. Most of the, most of the RVers nowadays that we are around are elderly like we are, and they like to go to bed fairly early. So, no, I don't, I don't think that would be the problem at all.
What is the road width? There were some concerns about RVs being able to pass in the night without running each over the, off the road.
On Pearson Road, is that what you're asking about?
Well, Pearson, I'm pretty sure can handle it, the small section of Michael going into the park.
Michael is very small, but, you know, there's only, there's only one, two houses, I believe I'm correct on that, on that road.
I see those fingers, there are three.
Is there's three? Okay. I'm sure that the county, when they give us a approval of it, they will require us to do some things there. Even though the road's very narrow, we certainly will cooperate with what the county makes us do.
And I assume from the definition, RV park, there'd be no tent camping?
No, we don't want any campers there, we don't want any long-term people there, and certainly no, no mobile homes.
Okay. Is there sufficient right-of-way there for you to be able to do anything on Michael from Pearson down there?
Pretty tough. We can give, we can give a right-of-way there, but I'm not sure the other people that's above us would be willing to do it. You'd have to ask them.
Mr. Stillman.
From what you're saying, I'm envisioning basically an up, a higher-end RV park, similar to what we see over in Baldwin County?
Yes, sir, a very high-class one.
Yeah. Good, I'm glad. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm fairly familiar with a couple of Mr. Bennett's projects and how he has complied with the county engineering and some of the building codes, and I'm prepared to make him a recommendation to support moving forward with this.
Mr. Richards, I'll second it.
And for the, for the neighbors that are out here that have concerns, this is the first step. It would still go to the county commission, it goes to a development process, there'll be lots of other times for input, and if you see things starting to move in a way that you really don't like, there's always more time to raise your concerns. I think it will solve a lot of your problems with the drug issues, the folks coming down there doing things they're not supposed to be doing. I think it will improve the neighborhood more than it will damage it, and I really see them people using Pearson Road. You're driving a massive diesel pusher, you're going to go on the safest, widest road possible. You're not going to want to be driving through a neighborhood.
Michael is the widest road versus Pearson, because you have a short, very short road that comes down Pearson, not before you get to the, to the intersection of Michael and Pearson.
Okay.
And that's where the trucks, buses run up to your road. And if you're coming from Gulf Breeze...
Wait, I need y'all to come to the microphone so we can hear.
It's also not just us. For Sunshine Records, we have to have it recorded as well.
So just name and address.
Andrew Menefee, 5605 Michael Drive. On RVs doing Pearson versus Michael Drive, if you're coming south on Avalon towards Gulf Breeze, a GPS will take you and turn you on Pearson. If you're coming from the Gulf Breeze direction, a GPS is going to turn you on Elaine, which then takes a left and then takes another right and comes straight down Michael to the RV park. So that's where we're concerned about the traffic coming down Michael Drive, is GPS is bringing you that direction down our street.
I know, when I went down there, my GPS, I was coming south, sent me through Elaine, but then by the same token, I know a lot of the RV parks that I've gone to in other states and in this state also, on their signage and advertising, they will tend to point people in the safest direction to get in there. There's a lot of them that say, do not pay attention to your GPS, this is the way you need to come in. So I understand the problem. When I came in, I saw the same thing, but I think it's something that, basically, the developer in the county with proper signage and proper advertising can eliminate most of those problems.
Yeah. Well, and then the issue with Pearson that we have, and especially us, because we're the last house, we're at the corner of Pearson and Michael Drive, is where the dirt road comes, like, from down towards Gulf Breeze, people come down Pearson, and when they hit that, where that four-way is right there, there's a little dip, but it's kind of a straightaway from the dirt road to where Pearson curves and goes up towards Avalon, and that's a 30, 30 mile an hour, 25? And, because we're right there, and we have security cameras, there's people that are doing typically 55, 60 miles an hour that come down Pearson, and then there's that, that dog leg, that L curve that goes up Pearson, so it's a blind turn. And what we're concerned about is people bringing in Class A RVs and things like that, and hitting that turn the same time that you've got people coming 60 miles an hour from the other direction on Pearson, like my husband, I think, was saying. We just had a car flip over four, five, six months ago from that same thing. Two people met right there at that curve going too fast, and one car flipped over. We've had cars run in the ditch right there, so that's the concern with Pearson. We prefer they go that way, but you're going to have issues potentially with the RVs coming around that curve and the speeds. I don't know about when the parks were there before, but we see the speeds that these people are doing right now, coming down Pearson to that turn.
Okay, thank you. Would one of the deputies make note of that and mention it to the traffic unit, that county could raise some money on Pearson Road? Thank you, sir.
Sounds like a revenue opportunity for the Sheriff's Department.
One of the things I would like to bring up also, is this would be a great opportunity for these residents to work with those gentlemen together. You have a very powerful voice, not only to the Board of County Commissioners, but to the county as a whole, to get some of those problems resolved, and I think you will end up saying, they're pretty good business people to be around, our residents, and I think you can get things like that resolved pretty easily.
Because the RVers will put on the website, they will comment if it's easy access or difficult access, and it doesn't take too many negatives, and you're struggling for occupancy.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, maybe some for the developers, some of those curves that are tougher, maybe they have the mirrors that sometimes they'll put up where you can see kind of down the curve. Actually, just recently, I know I don't fit the demographic, but I recently purchased a 35-foot trailer, and my wife and kids, now, we love it. In fact, we rent it out, well, we're not using it, and today I pulled it to Fort Pickens to drop it off for people renting it from me. And I can tell you one thing, I'm a fairly aggressive driver, but when I'm pulling that thing behind me, I am not. It forces you to be a lot more mindful and careful about what's going on, and when I'm 54 feet going down the road with the trailer and the truck together, but you obviously want to make sure there's, I grew up on a farm driving tractors and trailers, so I'm pretty adept at it. I know some people may not be very good, but they're going to get good, well, the habits, they're going to do what they can to be safe, but it is up to you guys as developers to make sure they can get in and get out, because like the chairman was saying, if it's not, people are going to stop coming. But I think that's good for you guys, because if, they're going to have to address those things for people to get in and out, but they're not going to be the ones going 60 miles an hour down that road for sure, and maybe that'll help fix that problem. In fact, the way those brake controllers work, when you touch the brakes on those things, you're, the trailer's stopping the truck, it's not your vehicle stopping the other. So when I first saw this, I was a little bit skeptical, but when I started looking through it to see what kind of park you're looking for, I think it actually does fit. Like I said, I was at Fort Pickens today dropping a trailer off, and a couple of the pictures looked really similar to where you've got the trees and the water sitting there. I think it'd be a good way to get people to our county from other places to spend money. My renters today were from Georgia, and of course, their, their money is going to Escambia County, because they're at Fort Pickens, and I think having something like this in our county would be a good way to get some tax revenue off of the people that don't live here. And I think it would address some of the issues with people being out there when not supposed to and feel like they're not being watched, they can tear the place up and, you know, maybe not be such good neighbors out there. And again, I think with, if they're sort of developed as an R1, I think you guys would have even more problems. I think there'd be more traffic going in and out if people, if people live there versus having someone pull up and stay for three days. When you drive these trailers or these RVs around, you're not wanting to get, get in and out a bunch of times. When I, when I unhook that thing, I don't want to hook back up to it for a few more days, so I think it'd be a good use for the, for the property, good use for the area, and definitely better than an R1 development out that way. But again, I think you guys working together can help them address some of those issues to make sure, you might even get the county to fix some problems you guys are having as residents, from the revenue the county expects the business is going to make, and there's no reason for you guys not to use that partnership, but I'm in support of this. Whereas, again, last month, what we were looking at was very, very different. I don't see where we'd be getting people coming in other than going to carpenters, campers, and paying $300 a month, and now they can live, you know, full-time on a place, but this, this is definitely not that, so I'm in, I'm definitely in support of this project as it, as it sits, and I think it'll fix some of the problems that, that we're seeing already.
And one other thing some folks don't realize, that campers or RVers pay both the sales tax and the bed tax. So county's getting 5% bed tax plus the sales tax on it as well, so it's a good revenue generator for everyone involved. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. This is recommendation to the county commission passes unanimously, and it will be heard at the next commission review of rezoning. So if you still feel you want to oppose it or want to talk to the commissioners, learn more, you can attend that meeting.
For you to know and make your positions known, that's good for the Lord of the Catfish here, a group like you, safe.
Thank you so much for your patience. Did the applicant for 2019 CU 008?
No, sir.
Titan Specialties Construction make an appearance?
No.
No, sir.
Seeing that he did not, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to, yeah, go on.
Make a motion to table.
I hear a motion to table without objection.
Yes.
Hearing none, that item is tabled. Next item on the agenda would be chairperson matters. We, we had one item that went twenty-four minutes. This one went just right at the half hour before we got into the question period.
Good. We have time.
So, I did have my timer going and according to the clock on the wall, it's still ten minutes to six. Planning Department matters. Rescheduling of the September meeting, tell me about that.
Yes, sir. So, basically, I've been directed by our county administrator and our finance director that they will be holding budget hearings in this room on Thursday, September the 12th. So, we would need to reschedule our meeting for September. My proposal is for Wednesday, September the 11th. So, I don't know if that's, if the board members are, are open for, for us doing that. It's basically, it keeps us in the same week. It doesn't shift things too much and throw too much out of whack, you know, regarding continuing on from the zoning board to the BOCC as such. So, that's, that's a recommendation for the board. If you can check your calendars and let us know, please, that would be great. If we can do it tonight, that'd be even better. That way, we can go ahead and just make sure that people are aware of it.
Are they going to discuss our compensation package?
Going to double it.
Just, just curious.
Mr. Ward, I will not be able to be here on that since it is September 11th. I will be in Washington.
And I do have a standing meeting the second Wednesday of the month, so I also would have a conflict, but if it looks like we still have a quorum, I have a very good vice chair that can handle the meeting.
Well, I was also going to mention, there may be folks out for, for church services as well on a Wednesday night. I don't know if that affects decision there, but.
Moving it up to Tuesday may be a more doable option, but-
I can certainly check the calendar with, with admin staff, see whether or not the room's reserved or not, but, so it's Tuesday. More for individuals is a better date for September the 10th or?
It would be a logistical problem, but you may want to look at moving the quarterly Tiger Point meeting, pushing it a month. And instead of a meeting in Tiger Point in August, meet in September, we could stay on the same date unless staff has to be at the budget meeting.
Understand.
And you'd have to coordinate that with county commission to move their morning meeting as well.
That would actually, due to public notifications and the control room and things like that and broadcasting, recording of meetings minutes, staff would need to be in attendance here and broadcasting the budget meeting and cannot do the same thing down at Tiger Point at the same time.
Just, just looking at options.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'll, I'll check into September the 10th and then we'll just send out a poll and basically see first either September the 10th or September the 11th, if that's, if that's okay with staff or-
Or September 9th.
Yes, sir. Okay.
But everybody's good for next month, May 9th in Tiger Point?
I'll be there.
Yes, sir. So, did you want to go over the results for, were there any questions regarding the BOCC? Just a couple items for discussion that went through here. I'll make it pretty quick, wrap this up.
Oh, I, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
About that one that we did last month where we had a five-to-five tie on a motion to, it was a motion to deny, or no, it was a motion to approve and then it was a five-to-five tie which denied.
Passed unanimously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But what I wanted to ask is what would have happened had it been motion to deny and it was a tie? Would that mean it would automatically approve?
Yes, ties are, ties are automatic denial on that. Typically, we do, and staff questioned this as well, typically, we do have to have a motion on a, on a positive. So, if it's, you know, whether or not it's for denial or approval or whatever, if there's not a motion in the positive, you have to, you know, turn around and re-vote so that the motion is in the positive, whereas a, you know, a motion for denial as such. So, yes, that one was denied. There was basically in a, what's that?
It was approved.
Yes, sir. So, the long one run was that one was approved by the Board of County Commissioners. There was also a, a question about a historic rezoning that occurred as well. The Board of County Commissioners basically just dropped the rezoning. They denied the rezoning, but went ahead and approved the special exception and allowed her to go ahead and split the property. That way, it still remained in the historic zoning district with the historic standards on that. Another one was the one that you guys denied as well regarding the, the Black Rock off of Billory Road. They denied that one as well. So, that one was, that was the second time around on that, that one. The, the other one was, there was a rezoning off of East Bay Boulevard for, the gentleman wanted to take a landscaping business to Highway Commercial Development. The Board of County Commissioners basically denied his conditional use and rezoning request. However, they kind of had a stay regarding his code enforcement violations, similar to what you did for a previous case, until we can go back and take a look at the land development code. And then, of course, the last one was the, the RV park that was there off of Ward Basin Road. The applicant did withdraw it prior to going to the Board of County Commissioners. So, you may see it. Certainly, if it's denied, they have to wait a year for a similar request. However, since they withdrew it, they can certainly come back in next month and submit again, but I think they're going to go back to the, to the board on that one, so. And with that, I would also like to say that Mr. Collins, this is his last meeting, so he's leaving us for the city of Tampa and that area down there. So, we will be in the process of going through that again. Actually, Darlene has volunteered to kind of step up and help us. So, Darlene will be back, I'll be here as well and we'll be tag teaming on all this together and then hopefully we'll have some, have some new, new help coming in.
You, this is making my head hurt. You said a minute ago that when something ties, it technically fails. So, you're, we're supposed to re-motion, but wouldn't that tie any?
No, no, sir, not on the ties. A tie is, if you, vote with a tie, it's a denial. I'm saying, there was another situation where we, where the board voted on another case and basically there was not a, it was, the motion was for approval and like seven people denied the vote and we just said, we went ahead and said, oh, it was denied.
Okay.
So, and that was not, that was not the situation. We should have turned around and said, make a motion for denial and then everybody vote on it. So, you just have to make sure that you have a positive vote on it.
Okay. Well, that was, because you had said if it's a tie, if we, if we make a motion to approve and it ties, then it basically fails, but that's a failure, so I don't, that seems like it could be the same thing.
A motion to denial in a tie would be an approval because it would still be denied the applicant's request.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's what I, that's exactly what you said, it would be an approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, to request that, and I didn't mean to bring up the discussion earlier with the gentleman about the fence, but I'd like to make a motion that we just go ahead and, and approve as a board eight-foot fence because they're going to get approval anyway.
It's not-
Well, we can, we can make that request, we can approve, make that request for the LDC.
Yeah, I think we need to, when we get into the rewriting the land development code, we need to take a very strong look at the fences, but sightlines have to be considered because we have people that-
Agreed.
-want to do a side one that goes, and it fits the backyard fence, but it still blocks sightlines and those have got to be addressed on a case-by-case. Because the one that we approved, I was shocked that they overrode it because I went out and looked at it even after we voted to be sure I had saw it right the first time and still had the same questions of why this one was a problem and the one across the street wasn't.
And just, so is that guy going to have to tear out his fence now? The one from last month that-
The firefighter from New York? I don't know. I just know that the, the board denied it.
That's, that's what I saw. I just, I don't, I don't see how it's a sightline issue. You can call it that if you want, but you can stand at the stop sign and see two miles down the road. I don't see how that's, but I guess that's above our pay grade.
That's why they make the big bucks. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn at nine oh-
Yes, you do. Second.